It being 1:01 PM and we have completed our 45-minute lunch recess. We are now reconvening for the afternoon session. I would like to announce that I do have a motion to extend beyond 3 o'clock if needed in order to complete town meeting. When we left off, we voted the motion to amend under Article 7A-11. We now have further discussion on the main motion. At this time, I call upon Everett Malaguti, Precinct 1. Mr. Malaguti, please proceed. We're debating Article 7A-11. Everett Malaguti on the motion. Mr. Parker questions the quorum. The quorum is presumed, but he questions it. Therefore, we'll take a vote. And at this time, we're going to be taking an electronic vote. And for all of you who are here, please press "yes." And when we're ready, the light will go on. Ask you to... When the light goes on, you will vote "yes" if you're present. And this is in response to Mr. Parker's question of the quorum. Please vote when the light appears. And you will be voting "yes" if you are present. And please vote. You have 20 seconds in which to indicate that you are here in the room. We will have 90 town meeting members would be a quorum. Eighty-two are voting, eighty-four are voting, eighty-eight... We see that over 90 have... Ninety-one have voted. We have a quorum. We'll now continue. Everett Malaguti, thank you.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct 1. On the motion 7A-11 for the school budget, what I'd like to question is, in the school committee and department's book, Cost Center 371 on page 9, Charter Schools Rising Tide, there's a amount for... Pardon me. My understanding is that that cost right there is for busing students that go to the school that live within Plymouth. I'm concerned at that figure because I feel that we shouldn't have to pay for the charter schools expenses. That amount should actually be coming out of the seven-plus million that comes out from the cherry sheet that goes directly to the charter schools. And I think that when we develop our budget for next year, we should look more closely at that, as I think, in my opinion, it's an unnecessary expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gary Majestas, Superintendent Schools, responding. We're on Article 7A-11. Dr. Majestas.
Yes, Mr. Malaguti. The $239,239 is designated for charter school transportation. It is amended of the charter school legislation that the school district, the local school district, has to provide transportation for the students that live within the bounds of the community. So not only do we have a Chapter 70 reduction through the cherry sheet that applies to the tuition of those children that go to the charter school, the Plymouth Public Schools is responsible for the management of transportation and the bus contracts that actually get bargained to actually transport the charter school students. We have nine different buses that supply transportation for the charter schools. And one of the dilemmas that we have is students that attend the charter school are from all over Plymouth, from one end of town to the other. So it's somewhat of a complex busing system. But our office manages the buses for the charter school, where that comes from routing all the way to bus passes, because they actually pay their bus pass at our office. So that is one of the things that the legislation mandates, and we actually have to follow through with it.
Further discussion? Peter Neville. We're debating Article 7A-11. Mr. Neville.
Could I ask just for some more detail? I'm over on page 10 of this very glossy and very professional look-up. And 023 of Special Education Services, $7 million. Drop down to Autism, 026, $1,781. I'm going to drop down further to 033, Special Learning Disabled, and that's $6 million. So if I just add the $6 million and the Special Education Services, I'm at $13 million. And then if I add in the $1 million for autism, there's another million in there for Intellectual Life and Basic Skills, I'm going to be up to a number around what we see in 021, which is around $16 million. So our General Education Services, which have... You know, I think of general education.
Sure.
Just showing up at school. Here we go. College A, college B, whatever. Then I've got all these other Special Education Services, but I see Special Education Services broken out to several amounts that would add up to or exceed the General Education Services. So is that what I should be seeing? Is that... Are we spending more for special ed than we are for general ed?
Absolutely.
Dr. Majestas.
Yeah, so we try to provide as much detail as to the specifics of the different departments. This particular line item, line item 23 within the budget you have is for Special Education Services. Special Education Services are really broken out for anyone with an individual education plan. That is a contract, in a sense, between the families and the school department. We have 1,400 children in the Plymouth Public Schools that receive Special Education Services. To be able to actually manage those services with special education teachers and supports, that's about $7.1 million across the district through all our 13 schools. We have a specialized Autism Spectrum Disorder Program in the district that we started to be able to address students with autism. We started that program probably 12 years ago. We had about two or three students. Now we have about 177 students in the Plymouth Public Schools that are diagnosed with autism, and that is the management of that program. And then we have Special Learning Disabled MSN. The MSN is relative to moderate special needs teachers, and these are teachers that are specifically trying to deal with some of the disabilities that we do have in our school district. So those... This line item is specific to teachers that are certified and have the license for dealing with students with moderate disabilities. So they are very specific as to each function of each one of those line items, and that's how they're broken out within the budget.
Don't go away. I got a question, if that's okay.
Samuel Butterfield, Precinct 4, followed by Donald Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to just commend the school system for the amazing job that it's doing, and the school system is light years ahead of what it was when I was a student locally. So I'm thankful for that, and for my grandchildren are thankful for that. I just wanted to ask if the... I mean, I noted that the subcommittee from the Finance Subcommittee on this offered three excellent recommendations, I thought, that were very positive. And I wondered if Dr. Majestas or Dr. Sorensted could comment on those and talk about whether or not that's... Those are something that could be worked with, that the town... They could work with on the town side to accomplish them.
Sure.
Dr. Majestas.
Within the report that is being referenced, it's actually on page 116 of the Subcommittee Report. It's in the big book. There were three recommendations that were presented by the Finance Committee Subcommittee for Education. The first one was to really take a look at the consolidation and the joint venture of services between the Plymouth Public Schools and the Town of Plymouth. I might add that about seven, eight years ago, we actually did a consolidation committee, and we did an investigation as to how this would play out in the Plymouth Public Schools and across the town. It really never went anywhere. We have talked with Melissa Arigie about the possibility of another group coming together to take a look at what these efficiencies would be and how they would function together. So that's something that I anticipate that we will be looking at, and I'm sure that will be shared with the town at large. The next issue was taking a look at the town officials and the legislators that support the Town of Plymouth to really take a look at Chapter 70 and the funding formula, which is something that is a significant dilemma that we have. The school committee discusses this item quite frequently when we discuss the budget. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents have been very active in trying to shed light on the disparities of Chapter 70. Just so that you understand where Chapter 70 comes from, Chapter 70 is state aid for schools, and that comes directly from state tax. And those Chapter 70 dollars get trickled into communities. What people have a really difficult time with is the formula that actually comprises this action, does not get modified at all. It doesn't get modified, and it doesn't keep up with the inflation rate. So I think the motivation for this suggestion is to really lobby, and even this body and members of this body that have influence, to really get legislators to really force the issue on a relook at Chapter 70. And the last issue is to really take a look at other opportunities to raise funds external to the school budget, external to the tax rate, to look at opportunities to fund technology, to fund some of the growth areas within our budget that we continually come to town meeting for. And we are very interested in looking at that opportunity so that we can take something off the budget so town meeting doesn't have to bear the burden of that. And that's something that we're really interested in doing. And I anticipate in the years to come that you will see movement in the school district to try to bring some of the items that are line items offline so that we can actually fund them through other sources. So we are very interested in doing that as well. These are the recommendations that were presented by the Subcommittee.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote on Article 7A-11 for $97,34,575. First call for a voice vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. We now move to Article 7B, and we have a motion. Mr. Salerno moves a town vote to appropriate $4,162,002 to defray water direct costs and transfer $1,279,330 for water indirect costs to the general fund by raising $5,389,495 and 6 cents of water receipts in transferring. And you'll see you have a spreadsheet here for the transfer. It's a majority, and a roll call. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 7B, which will appropriate $4,162,002 to defray water direct costs and transfer $1,279,338 for water indirect costs to the general fund.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. Article 7C is the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and Mr. Salerno moves town vote to appropriate $5,922,809 to defray sewer direct costs and transfer $398,248 for sewer indirect costs to the general fund by raising $6,315,617.99 of sewer receipts and transferring. You have the spreadsheet. It's a majority, and a roll call. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 7C, which will appropriate $5,922,809 to defray sewer direct costs and transfer $398,248 for sewer indirect costs to the general fund.
Peter Neville.
Precinct 10. I may be alone, but I find this very hard to follow. And maybe Lynn could offer some clarification. At some point, I don't know if it's in this appropriation here, but we're going to spend $1 million to fix something in the sewer. And I don't know if it's in this part here. And I just don't understand what we're doing here. And I guess the sewer receipts, I guess I'm... As I looked at the explanation, we have 3,000 people hooked up to the sewer. And I think I'm under the impression that represents less than 50% of the people who could be hooked up to the sewer. And there's some question as to why or when we might increase the users and whether or not that would increase the receipts. So there's a picture here that's incomplete for me in terms of the income that's generated from this enterprise and the costs associated with running the enterprise. And maybe just an up-to-date clarification of what the picture looks like.
Anyone here respond to Mr. Neville's comments regarding Article 7C, the Sewer Enterprise Fund? Lynn Barrett is the Director of Finance.
Included in this budget, 7C for the sewer, all the debt associated with the preliminary numbers that we got from Clean Water Trust are included in that $3.2 million. And within this article, we're raising the sewer receipts to cover all of these costs. So it's a balanced budget.
Lynn, can I just ask you, is there any requirement... The sewer receipts are when people tie into the sewer?
Well, we'd have... Lynn Barrett.
Can you ask the question again? I wasn't clear on what your question was.
What comprises the sewer receipts?
Sewer receipts comprises the rate payers, what they pay for their usage. It also includes any sewer bank fees that are received for development or additions to the system. It includes the septic receipts over at the wastewater treatment plant. It includes any liens that we might collect on sewer, interest income in the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and any other fees that are charged for sewer. That's all the revenue that goes into the sewer fund. That's what the sewer receipts are.
Thank you.
Further discussion on 7C? Yes, Peter Savine. We're debating 7C, the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Mr. Savine.
Peter Savine, Precinct 15. I would like to compliment Lynn and Melissa on the job they've done working with Mass Clean Water Trust on how they have positioned the debt for our sewer debacle. I think they've come up with a very intelligent and creative approach. And I looked closely at this. There's no money in the... Coming out of the general fund to subsidize any of the debt this year, fiscal '19. Point I want to raise is for town meeting to think about that in future years. You know, we don't know about settlements. We don't know what's going to happen. But in future years, there is likely to be a request that the general fund subsidize the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And she gave this in her budget presentation back in February, I believe, or maybe in December. So I just want to raise the issue, that there's an issue coming down the pike. And I'm trying to float the concept that to the extent in the future revenues are taken from the general fund to subsidize the Sewer Enterprise Fund, if and when there's a settlement, those revenues first go back to the general fund to replace them before prepaying debt, et cetera. Anyway, that's... Just wanted to raise that issue. Thank you.
Further discussion on 7C? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. 7D. Mr. Salerno moves a town vote to appropriate $2,325,772 to defray solid waste direct costs and transfer $273,069 for solid waste indirect costs to the general fund by raising $2,597,156 of solid waste receipts and transferring according to the spreadsheet. It's a majority, and a roll call. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 7D, which will appropriate $2,325,000 to defray the solid waste direct costs and transfer $273,000 for solid waste indirect costs to the general fund.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. Article 7E, the Airport Enterprise Fund. Mr. Salerno moves a town vote to appropriate $2,635,922 to defray airport direct costs and transfer $206,853 for airport indirect costs to the general fund by raising $2,837,719 of airport receipts and transferring according to the spreadsheet. It's a majority, and a roll call. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 7E, which will appropriate $2,636,000 to defray airport direct costs and transfer $207,000 for airport indirect costs to the general fund.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. Article 8. Mr. Sal... Oh, we're going to take a final vote on the total fiscal 2019 budget, Articles 7A to E. And Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to appropriate... Do we have a total? Lynn Barrett? Or Carrie on the total budget? Okay. So it's $233,594,733. Any further discussion? $233,594,733 is the amount shown in the motion packet. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." The motion carries by majority. Those in opposition, please stand and be recognized. Randolph Parker, Precinct 7. Everett Malaguti, Precinct 1. And Richard Caproni, Precinct 15. And Gideon Strier in Precinct 5. Thank you. Article 8. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53-F 1/2, with Massachusetts general laws establishing cable public access as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2019, and further appropriate $1,685,000 to defray cable public access direct costs as described in the memo provided on pages 129 to 130 in the annual town meeting report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. You have the remainder of the text. It's a majority, and a roll call. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 9-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 8. Approval of this article will establish a cable public access enterprise fund, transfer the balance from the cable revolving fund to this new fund, and approve the fund's fiscal year 2019 budget as provided in the article supporting documentation. State law recently changed, so this fund is being set up according to guidelines from the Department of Revenue. The town receives cable-related franchise fees as well as license fees from Comcast and Verizon.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. Article 9. Article 9, we have first the 9A items, which will be taken separately from the 9B items. And under 9A, Mr. Salerno moves the town appropriates the sum of $3,132,672 to pay costs of various capital projects as shown below, and for the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And you'll see the spreadsheet shown below with the various items. This is going to be a majority vote for the A group. A roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve the request in Article 9A. Approval of this article will fund town manager approved capital requests of $3,132,672. The list and funding source is included in the motions packet and the spreadsheet wherein these are included and rated is in Supplement 1.
We have a list of 26 items. We'll now have discussion on the 9A group. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. 9B items. Mr. Salerno moves the town appropriate the sum of $13,600,000 to pay the costs of various capital projects. You have the remainder of the check text. And these are all two-thirds vote. A roll call if it's not unanimous. And we have four items in this group. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve the request in Article 9B. Approval of this article will fund town manager approved capital requests of $13,600,000. The list and funding source is included in the motions packet and the spreadsheet wherein these are included and rated is in Supplement 1.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. We now move to Article 10. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to appropriate the sum of $7.15 million to pay the costs of site preparation, demolition of existing buildings, design, construction, equipping and furnishing of a new fire station. You have the text. It's a two-thirds vote. A roll call if it is not unanimous. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 10. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize borrowing $7.5 million for the design, construction, equipping and furnishing of a new three-bay, two-story fire station at 15 Hedge Road in North Plymouth. Replacement of the current fire station, built in 1910, for horse-drawn steam engines is long overdue. The property was purchased by the town for the specific purpose of constructing a fire station.
Kevin Joyce on Article 10. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Didn't we somewhere in this just already approved money to demolish the building on that site, the fire station? I thought we had three different areas.
Melissa Arigie, Town Manager, responding to Kevin Joyce.
You're correct, Mr. Joyce. We did appropriate demolition money, but we did $115,000 for a variety of things that we would need to demolish. That was just one example. So we will probably take that $115,000 that you voted earlier today, work on that for the other two properties. In addition, we have a few more that may come into play based on the most recent storm.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. Article 11. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to transfer the sum of $654,652 from the Town Promotion Fund. You have the text, Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 11. Town meeting approval of this article will allow expenditures totaling $654,652 from the town's promotion fund. The promotion fund, created by special legislation, is funded with 45% of the receipts from the hotel motel tax. The Visitor Services Board oversees expenditures from this fund. Funds are used for special events, celebrations, and paying for a marketing and promotions contract with destination Plymouth.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. Article 12 is withdrawn. Article 13. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to accept a sum of money that the state declares as available funds as the state's share of the cost of work under general laws, Chapter 90. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 9-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 13. Town meeting approval of this article will enable the town to accept state highway, Chapter 90, funds for repairs and construction of public roads. While the actual amount of Chapter 90 funds for fiscal year 2019 was not known at the time this report was prepared, Plymouth did receive more than $1.5 million for fiscal year 2018.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Oppose say "no." Motion carries unanimously. Article 14 has been withdrawn. We now move to Article 15, first 15A. Mr. Salerno moves a town vote to appropriate $325,000 to acquire land as indicated below and transfer $325,000 for the acquisition and other costs associated therewith from water retained earnings. And you have the text. It's a two-thirds vote. A roll call if it is not unanimous. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee reconsidered this article... The Advisory and Finance Committee reconsidered this article at its March twenty-ninth meeting, and as a result is making the following recommendation. In a vote of nine one zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends, Town Meeting, approve Article fifteen A. Acquisition of this property will help alleviate restrictions placed on the Derby Pond well, which supplies water to the northeast part of the town, northwest part of the town. Last year Derby Pond dropped below 122 feet, so the town was limited to four hours of pumping per day for five months. The Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs has worked with the Department of Public Works to come up with a solution. They have identified two key properties in close proximity to the pond, which have operational cranberry bogs and draw water from the pond for irrigation and flooding. The town will buy one of the parcels for its appraised value of $325,000. Funding will come from the Water Enterprise retained earnings. The town has submitted a drinking water supply protection grant, and if successful, will receive reimbursement of fifty percent of the acquisition price, $162,500. The town also hopes to purchase the other parcel at a future town meeting.
Discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Oppose say no. The motion carries by more than two-thirds. Those voting in opposition, please stand to be recognized. Thank you. Brian McGeek, Precinct nine. Thank you. Fifteen B is withdrawn. We now move to the next item, which is sixteen A. Mr. Salerno moves that the vote taken under Article sixteen A of the 2014 Spring Annual Town Meeting, as previously amended, is hereby amended by reducing the now $2,500,000 borrowing authorization approved thereunder for the restoration of the eighteen-twenty courthouse by the sum of $500,000, and further to transfer the sums shown in your printed materials. Majority and a roll call. Mr. Salerno?
In a vote of five four zero, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends, Town Meeting, approve Article sixteen A. Town Meeting approval of this article will be to transfer $250,000 from the courthouse meals tax fund, and raise $250,000 of fiscal year 2019 community preservation revenues to reduce the amount of the CPC eighteen-twenty courthouse debt from 2.5 million to 2 million. The meals tax revenue has been coming in each quarter higher than expected and based on estimates. And based on estimates, the finance director believes there is sufficient funding for the paydown of the debt over the next few years in combination with CPC funding. This falls within the scope of the meals tax, and will preserve some community preservation funds for new purposes in future years. The article was not without some controversy, as those in opposition felt it was premature to spend a projected surplus. Also, some felt it was incumbent upon the CPC to uphold its promise to pay its share of the project. In the end, the majority felt comfortable relying on the finance director's recommendation.
William Cohen is the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and he'll be presenting on each of the articles under Article sixteen. Welcome, William Cohen.
Bill Cohen with the Community Preservation Committee. Article sixteen is a cost-saving measure. It is something that the Community Preservation Committee started to recognize in year one, two, three, as we enter year four of the funding of the new town hall and eighteen-twenty courthouse complex. I think it's important that we have to go back to the year 2015, when Town Meeting took up this issue initially. And it was centered around how we were going to pay for the new town hall at $35 million. And there was great deal of reservation about utilizing property taxes for such an endeavor. The idea would be that the meals tax would be utilized for that purpose. But Town Meeting only had two experiences with the meals tax prior to this discussion in 2015. And that was one, it had been adopted by Town Meeting. It put on the, utilized for the general fund, the collection to the general fund. The residents of Plymouth got signatures. They went to ballot. It was removed. Later, Town Meeting took up the meals tax, again, looking to fund the 2020 celebration. Again, Town Meeting debated it. They had in their back of their minds the recognition that it had been adopted once before and voted off. So there was a lot of reservation. It did not pass at that Town Meeting. When came to Town Meeting and suggested the meals tax, and it was the Community Preservation Committee, it was the Board of Selectmen, there were a number of residents that were advocating that the meals tax be utilized to pay for the new town hall complex, Town Meeting had a concern about whether or not the meals tax would pay for the new town hall. At that point, the Community Preservation Committee stepped up to the plate and indicated that we have some evidence of how the Community Preservation Act fund is performing. We can utilize that fund for the historical preservation, restoration, rehabilitation of the front eighteen-twenty structure, along with the meals tax paying for the new town hall complex. The article's passed, and it's important to know prior to that 2015 Town Meeting, the Community Preservation Committee, with Town Meeting's approval, has had a great commitment to this location going back as early as 2009. It was the Community Preservation Committee that had gone to Town, had went to Town Meeting and recommended that we utilize $1.5 million to acquire the complex in the first place. The building was turned over to the Redevelopment Authority for consideration in a reuse plan. As we know, after a certain point in time, it was brought back to the town, and a feasibility study was done. So the commitment to the community, the commitment that the Community Preservation Committee has had to this location is far-reaching beyond the original decision to make a town hall there. We're not relinquishing that original commitment. This article is not touching the original decision in 2015 that the CPA fund would be utilized to pay for the costs associated with the eighteen-twenty component of the restoration. That stands intact. What we are asking is that, after examining the meals tax over a three-and-a-half-year period, we're noting that it is coming in much stronger than before. This new evidence compared to what we were discussing at the 2015 Town Meeting required you to revisit this question, because this meals tax has been solely set up to pay for your new town hall. This eighteen-twenty structure is your new town hall. Your selectmen meet in the main courtroom. The town clerk meets in the first floor. All the business of the town clerk is utilized in the building. There are meeting spaces. This is not a museum. It is not, it is part of our functioning town hall. The original article that we voted on to pass at Town Meeting was to utilize the meals tax to pay for the new town hall. The committee felt that Town Meeting needed to revisit this question. I know that some people think that, you know, we have a commitment. We are maintaining that commitment, keeping that commitment intact, because the finance department will still be able to utilize CPA funds to pay down the remaining balance that was incurred at $2,740,000. Town Meeting did authorize nearly $5 million worth of borrowing of CPA funds. The committee never borrowed the $5 million. We paid with available funds coming in, staying off any borrowing or interest related to that. We didn't think that was something we wanted to do. It drives up the cost of our activities. But as the project came to completion, we did have to borrow $2,740,000. That principal and interest is what we're trying to control in a way that would be more beneficial to the town, meaning that the CPA can take its revenue and give it over to a bank in the form of principal and interest, or we can take in our community preservation revenue and reinvest it in our community. That revenue is scheduled to come in, and our ability to utilize in a way that's beneficial to the residents of Plymouth and their property taxes is something that we felt we had to come back and revisit with Town Meeting. And the finance department is here. We've worked with the finance department over the last three years, coming up with a way of accommodating this. And the director's here, if there's any questions.
Stephen Lyden, followed by Richard Caproni. Mr. Lyden?
Steve Lyden, Precinct twelve. Would it be easier to pay off the loan with the over $200,000 that you found in your unused funds and use that instead of using that money to buy Hi-Top?
Yep. That's a good question. The money that we're recommending under Article sixteen C that you speak of at Hi-Ho Hill, that fund is open space money. We can only use it for open space money. I can't use it to pay down principal and interest on a debt incurred under the historical preservation component of the Community Preservation Act. Each component of the CPA is utilized for that funding mechanism, whether it's housing, historical, and open space. The revenues are kept separate. So the money that we're looking at in Article sixteen C for Hi-Ho Hill is all out of the open space money. It can't be used for anything else.
So it can't, that $1.1 million, or $2 million can only be used for open space? So if we're paying down the debt, didn't that, didn't those funds come under historical preservation? So how can you go from taking money from the open space, the $2 million that you found you haven't used on open space, and put it towards historical preservation? I thought they had to be kept separate. Thank you.
They are kept separate, yep.
Thank you. Richard Caproni, to be followed by Nathan Siegel. Mr. Caproni?
Oh, sorry.
We're debating Article sixteen A.
Well, we did about eleven aye, 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 aye. So I'm asking you on sixteen A to do a no. I feel that this is an inappropriate request on the part of the CPA to use money that is not theirs. It's the meals tax money. The meals tax is running a surplus, and that's great. But we've got about thirty years to go to pay off the town hall. And many things can happen, both in the short and long term. We have no idea what the economy is going to look like in 2019 or 2020. And we should probably expect a drop-off in that revenue in 2021, after we have our successful birthday party. I'm here looking for us to press the reset button on the CPA. We're not here to debate these issues, but there's work to be done on the Stevens Field project. There's work to be done on the White Horse Beach bathhouse project. And there's certainly work to be done at the endlessly debated Simhaus project. So we need to keep this money where it is. In effect, if we allow the CPA to take this money, they have increased their funding from you, the taxpayer. Now, just to put it in perspective, the 1.5 percent CPA tax brings in approximately $2.2 million in revenue every year to this fund. They have sufficient funds to spend on paying down the borrowings as well as completing some of their projects. Additionally, they get another $400,000 from the state. So unless the CPA wants to tell us that they're broke, okay, we should, we should defeat this amendment, this appropriation, and hopefully defeat it soundly. Thank you.
Nathan Siegel, Precinct seven. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think we have an opportunity here to take advantage of the overperformance of the meals tax in order to better utilize the CPA funds and direct them back into the community where they belong, rather than taking on unnecessary debt and interest. By approving this article, we are preventing our property taxes from going towards paying off interest. As Mr. Caproni just mentioned, I see it a little bit differently. I feel that the CPA funds are coming from our property taxes, while the meals tax funds are coming from people eating in the restaurants. So we're, we're preventing property tax from being spent on debt and interest. We're taking income from people eating in the restaurants, which a large percentage of that is non-residents, and using that to pay off the entirety of the cost of the town hall. I think that's an appropriate use. I think that's within what was intended by the original vote. We still maintain the option of having, of holding the CPA to their original commitment if the meals tax revenue declines. But I'd much rather see the CPA maintain flexibility to direct their funds back into the community, to keep building on some of the challenges that we all know are out there, while using the meals tax to pay off the town hall, and then decide as a body where to direct those meals tax funds to next. Thank you.
Everett Malaguti? We're debating Article sixteen A.
Everett Malaguti. So I credit Mr. Cohen with saying that it's going to be a cost-saving measure. I see it as a cost-saving measure for the Community Preservation Committee and the act, so that they have an extra quarter million dollars at their disposal. But at the same time, we're also taking a quarter million dollars from the meals tax that could have been used to pay down more of the debt that we have somewhat sooner, even by a small amount. And I feel that we should be using both funds proactively to pay down debt sooner so we're not occurring more interest, so that doesn't have to be attained. Thank you.
Peter Savan, followed by Stephen Stryer. Mr. Savan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Savan, Precinct fifteen. I second Mr. Caproni's recommendation that we vote no on this issue. Some of you, you can tell by now, I'm a debt guy. Whether this is a permissible use under the original discussions and approval of Town Meeting is questionable to debate. Obviously, the FINCOM was almost evenly divided on this. I think it is a very slippery slope to start, oops, that's, you know, we're four years into, what, twenty-five, thirty-year bond issue to sort of, oh, let's be a little slippery with the covenants. Let's use it here. That fiscal cliff is approaching. I think we have to honor our covenants and the promises made. And this was inappropriate to do this. So I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Stephen Stryer, followed by Donna Curtin. Mr. Stryer. We're debating Article sixteen A of the Annual Town Meeting. Good afternoon, Stephen Stryer.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So I guess my story is basically the same as Bill's, but I tell it a little bit differently. But my story is about accountability and fiscal responsibility. So at 2014 Special Town Meeting, over the previous objections of the voters, this body, Town Meeting, approved Article nine, thereby enacting the meals tax and creating, after legislative ratification, eighteen-twenty courthouse fund. That same day, this body also passed the Annual Town Meeting Article ten, which, among other things, authorized the construction of our new town hall complex. To complete the trifecta, Article sixteen A authorized borrowing $5 million to be paid back from community preservation funds to facilitate the renovations and repairs to the historic eighteen-twenty courthouse portion of the new municipal complex. A job well done, and much credit to Mr. Cohen and the other members of the CPC. But since, since most of you were there that day, you may remember the three main selling points in support of these conjoined articles. The sunset provision of the meals tax. Number two, only the meals tax money would be used to construct the new town hall. And three, the major contribution of $5 million by the CPC. Now, I would be willing to bet no one in the hall that day, or anyone, or anyplace else, really believed the meals tax would ever sunset. And I think it would be safe to say that you were all hopeful in your belief that the taxpayers would not take a hit on their property taxes. But I ask, did any of you ever think the CPC would be recommending this article to Town Meeting today to take away the third leg of the stool? I doubt it, because even though it's, it's been implied, no one ever said, let's use $5 million of CPC funding unless the meals tax perform, outperforms estimates. So this is the accountability part. And I'm not talking about the CPC. I'm talking about you, Town Meeting. You approved these three articles. This is what you agreed to do to make the new town hall complex with the beautifully restored and renovated historic eighteen-twenty courthouse a reality. It's your words and actions that matter. The residents and taxpayers of this town expect and deserve elected officials to say what they mean and mean what they say. Now, in case you're thinking, well, things have changed. We should vote for this article because it will benefit the taxpayers by reducing the interest paid on the CPC borrowing. Please don't. First off, this plan, if enacted, will drag out the payments on this article for at least five or six years. Instead, this debt should be paid off over the next two years, using the existing $682,000 from the CPC's 2018 Undesignated Fund, $880,000 from the 2019 Unreserved Fund Balance, and with the balance paid from 2020 revenues. Even if my numbers are a little off, or you choose not to pay off the debt, as I've suggested, you should still not use the meals tax. Here's why. The language of Article nine and the enabling legislation allows for the eighteen-twenty courthouse fund money to be used for more than just the construction and renovation of the town hall. It also allows for funds to be spent on its operations and related uses, things such as heat and electricity. That's $125,000 savings to the taxpayers, looking at the numbers in this year's budget. The proportional share... The proportional share of a million dollar, uh, million dollars the town spends on property and liability insurance. A maintenance reserve, so that in 20 years, when the roof or the HVAC units need to be repaired, the money is there to make, to make those repairs. Or an interest reserve, just in case the mega storms, like we recently experienced, don't come in February or March, but in July and August. These are direct and identifiable benefits to the taxpayers of the town of Plymouth. That's my vision of fiscal responsibility and accountability. I hope it's yours as well. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Donna Curtin. We're debating Article 16A. Donna Curtin.
Donna Curtin, Precinct Free, uh, excuse me, Precinct 3. I think we're making this a little more complicated than it needs to be. There's a real simple question here. Do we want the resources of the Community Preservation Fund to be spent on doing the work that it has been doing so successfully in this town since its creation, helping to preserve the historic character of the open space and provide housing to our community according to the intent of the law? Or do we want it to go to pay debt service, when we can find a very convenient way to avoid that? I would move the question.
You can't move the question if you've made, made a statement.
Then I wish somebody else would move the question.
I will move. I move the question, Mr. Moderator.
We have a motion to close debate. At this time, I'd ask anyone who still wishes to be heard, please rise. Thank you. And at this time, we will now take a vote. It'll be a voice vote. It is a two-thirds vote. It is to close debate on Article 16A. All those in favor of closing debates, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no?
No.
The motion carries. We will now take a vote on Article 16A. It is a majority vote. It could be a roll call if it is not unanimous. We will now take a voice vote on Article 16A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no?
No.
It is not, it is not unanimous, and we will have a roll call by electronic voting. Get your clickers ready. We'll be voting on Article 16A. We believe we've fixed the light issue. The light will go on, and you'll begin voting on Article, there you go. All right, you have time, 20 seconds in which to vote. Please cast your votes. You'll see that the time is ticking down. We are down to 11 seconds. Town meeting members are voting on Article 16A. We will then continue with the other remaining articles under 16. And voting has now concluded, and you will begin to see on the screen the votes from the various precincts. And you'll see the vote on the screen, 71 having voted in favor, 47 in opposition, and zero abstentions. It's a majority vote. It carries. We will now be moving, as soon as we complete the screen, we'll be moving to Article 16B, which is on the warrant. Currently, you are seeing the precincts being displayed. Town meeting members are checking their votes to make sure that they, their votes were properly recorded. And at this time, we're going to continue with 16B. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote taken under Article 16A of the 2015 Fall Annual Town Meeting, as previously amended, is hereby amended by reducing the now $642,523 borrowing authorization. You have the full text, majority in a roll call, Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 7-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16B. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize a $642,523 reduction to the borrowing authorization for the restoration of the Sims House, using funds raised from fiscal year 2019 community preservation revenues. This will completely pay off the Sims House debt, thereby saving the town money by not incurring any more debt payments for this project beyond fiscal year 2019.
William Cohen, Chair, Community Preservation Committee.
Article 16B. Article 16B is to, um, complete the Sims House. The Sims House has been completed, was completed this spring. It was turned over to Minnetonka Village Common, Inc. During the process of those renovations, the Community Preservation Fund had to borrow, and this is the final payment on that borrowing. So by passing this article, we would have finished all payment obligations to the Sims House. And just a quick note, Minnetonka Village Common, Inc. took control of the property in August. They didn't have a certificate of compliance for occupancy, but they were able to take that obligation from the town and take over its heat, its light, and insurance, and carry that while they got their certificates of compliance, which they have now. They should be commended on their effort. They're now in the process of qualifying people for the affordable units and marketing the second floor for rental space, and they are now having event meetings at that location. This article, again, would finish up the obligation of the Community Preservation Act Fund in regards to the Sims House.
Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? The motion carries. I would ask those voting in opposition to please stand and be recognized. Richard Neely, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Article 16C. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to amend Article 12 of the 2015 special town meeting by increasing the amount appropriated from $705,000 to $1,100,000, transfer the following, totaling $395,000 for the acquisition other costs. You have a spread, you have the information here in your packet, some majority in a roll call, Mr. Salerno.
In a vote of 6-3-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16C. Town meeting approval of this article will amend the vote taking, taken under Article 12 of the 2015 special town meeting by increasing the amount appropriated by $395,000 from $705,000 to a total of $1,100,000 to acquire the 88-acre High Hope Hill property off Old Sandwich Road. Acquisition of this property will help protect the water supply at the Ellisville and Cedarville Wells, and help ecotourism, adding to the trail system, which one day will connect Mile Standish State Forest with Ellisville Harbor. This additional funding will come from a combination of grant funds, CPC open space reserve funds, and balances from previously approved open space acquisitions. Again, this article was not without considerable discussion. Those opposed generally felt that a 56% increase over three years did not reflect their sense of market conditions in fairness. Majority decided that preserving the property was the priority.
William Cohen.
Article 16C. It's an article of recommendation of utilizing open space money for the acquisition of open space. This money cannot be utilized for anything else. It is from the open space account, and it does not require any raising or appropriating. The funds are available for this acquisition. Again, we have to go back to a previous town meeting, when town meeting took up the original question on the High Hope Hill property back in 2015. There was a recommendation at town meeting for the acquisition at $705,000. That was based on an appraisal that was done back nearly four years ago. The appraisal came in at 7:05. After town meeting, when we moved to coordinate an agreement with the owners of the property, the principal decision-maker passed away. The land went into probate. It had to be dealt with on that level. It took some time. There was a number of years between family members straightening out the situation before they could put the property back on the market. It went back on, it went, it was available for sale again in 2017. We entered into an agreement with the family to have the property appraised. The new appraisal came in at 1.1 million dollars. That's a significant increase from 2014 to 2018, nearly 56%. We engaged the original appraiser from 2014, and we asked the original appraiser to review the work of the new appraiser from 2018. Both appraisers had came to the same conclusion that the frontage on Old Sandwich Road would allow this, um, development to occur that derives a value, but the back acreage, because of its topography, it was very hilly property, the site development costs were prohibitive to go out into the back acreage. There's nearly 60 acres out back that, that could have been developed, but because of its location and its landlocked nature, it wasn't. So the original appraiser indicated that he had gave the 68, the 60 acres out back a lesser value because it was landlocked and further from a possibility of development. So he had to give it a different value. The second appraiser, as noted by the first appraiser, had to review that 60 acres out back, and what they noted was that the back acreage, even though it was still landlocked, a subdivision has moved into position. Infrastructure has been built in, and there are buildable lots that have been purchased that abut this property. My, my understanding, after talking with the representatives of the property, that they are actually talking to one of the people that owns this lot. If these lots were acquired and, and you would have back, you would have access to the back acreage that could support another 21 units of housing. So two appraisers had to look at it differently, at two different points in time, and two things happening, where housing starts were down in 2014, they were up in 2018. Where the subdivision was set back, it had now had come closer with more infrastructure, making the second appraiser having to make a higher evaluation. Right now... Uh, this is the High Hope Hill entrance. Right now, the town has it appraised for approximately 1.6, uh, 1,016,900. After talking to the assessments, this, this, the assessor's office, they do a different approach than an appraiser would do an approach. The appraiser has to take in this account of whether it's landlocked, is there a subdivision, what are the possibilities in the near future, how many acquisitions are, are away from this land being developed, and how would that, you know, affect cost? The town assessor can't evaluate, cannot put that as part of their evaluation. One of the main reasons why we're focused on this parcel, and we've been focused on it for nearly five years now with the owners of the property, is because of its proximity. Here is Ellisville Harbor in the south. This area here is an AC/EC stretching along on the north side of Ellisville Harbor, the south side of Ellisville Harbor, moving up towards the Center Hill Preserve. In this area, this is State Road. This is Old Sandwich Road. Over here, this parcel here was acquired with CPA funding, the Savory Pond parcel, next to some previously owned town-owned land. This was the intention of protecting Ellisville Harbor and its water resource and Savory Pond, a pond that is, has been in crisis, but town meeting acquired the land around Savory Pond and took the ponds, the cranberry logs out of production, improving the condition of Savory Pond. As we go north here, we have Ellisville Harbor Well and the influence recharge area in the zone that stretches out back. Over here, we have, uh, this is the Savory Pond well going out in this direction. Over here, this is a town meeting CPA acquisition back from 2012 for nearly 368 acres of land. It was the intention of this parcel here to add to the protection of these two wells. As we head up Old Sandwich Road, there's some other town-owned properties on one side of Hi, the High Hope Hill property, and there's conservation land on the other side. So this sets up a nice network of open space in a corridor that we've been focusing on for nearly 16 years, as a result of an ENSA report that was done in the late 90s, indicating the town that they too should do strategic acquisitions, protect open space in the form of water protection, passive recreational, and building a corridor of trail-connected parcels that lead from Ellisville Harbor in the south to Mile Standish Forest. The report indicated you have two large environmental resources here in Plymouth, Cape Cod Bay, Mile Standish Forest. By connecting them, you can establish a presence in the ecotourism community. And in recent months, the town of Plymouth, well, an organization here in Plymouth, Pine Barrens Alliance, was awarded a $15,000 grant to promote ecotourism. So ecotourism is, is a vital part of this equation, but more importantly, you have an AC/EC area of critical environmental concern, making up the Ellisville Harbor area. You have two wells in their recharge areas. You have a number of ponds in this area. So this is why we were very focused on this acquisition. We felt it was beneficial on multitudinal levels, from environmental protection, from water protection, and from economic development in the form of ecotourism. And you can't put aside the idea of not looking at opportunities to protect our wells in their recharge areas, because if a well was to have to be filtered or moved, the cost would be astronomical. So this is a fast-growing part of Plymouth. There's an ability, where it's close to Cape Cod, to attract tourism to that location in the form of ecotourism, but we would have to continue this effort of acquisitions of this nature. The next slide here does show you the acreage around the High Hope Hill property. Again, a close-up of that location. This is kind of interesting. There's a elevation of nearly 204 feet on the property. Once you walk into the property, you walk up on this hill in the back 60 acres, you have a stunning view of Cape Cod Bay, a breathtaking north-to-south view from the Cape Cod to Wellfleet, up north to beyond the Pine Hills. When you're on the Pine Hills, you get nice views looking south or north, but from this location, you get a sweeping view that you don't get from the Pine Hills, where you have to be on either side of the Pine Hills to get a, that sweeping view that is offered from Plymouth when you look out at the bay. Here, at this location, it's offered at this elevation of nearly 204 feet. The way we're proposing to pay for this acquisition, as I indicated before, would come out of all of the, we'd come out of the open space account in available funds. And I can walk you through this. The first, um, the first funding source would be from Article 16C from 2017 town meeting. There was an article that town meeting entertained, passed. It was the acquisition of 44 acres, more or less, on the Isle River. The Office of Marine Environmental Affairs was able to secure a grant of in excess of $200,000. The property was worth over $400,000. In the end, the family that owned the property decided to give the, the land to the town. So the town of Plymouth didn't have to spend that $191,000. The Shan family, who owned the property, decided that they would donate this land to the town of Plymouth, which was greatly appreciated, because we received the 400, the 44 acres, and we were able to save $191,000. Another funding source that we have in open space is $57,000 left over from Article 16D from 2011 town meeting. This was a recommendation at town meeting to acquire half a dozen acres out behind PCIS, connecting the town forests with the Isle River Preserve. Because of the economy at that time, the family lost control of the property, were unable to sell us the acreage, but we found a different way through that location. So we wouldn't need the $57,000 for that acquisition that is available funds. When you add that together, it's nearly $248,000. And when you add that to the 705 that's already been allotted for this acquisition at the previous town meeting, and a grant of $85,000 that was awarded by the Department of Planning Development and their Conservation Commission, there is money set aside for open space acquisition at $85,000. That brings us to $1,038,000. That would require us only $62,000 to come out of the open space account that's available now, bringing us to the 1.1 million dollars. Again, this is an acquisition that's about water protection and ecotourism, and it's about protecting those habitats in this location that are important to this community. There's been a great deal invested in the last 15 years in this location, between the Isle River Preserve, between the Quinn property up on Old Sandwich Road, to preserve this location. This would add to that, strengthen the corridor that we're looking at, and we hope that you support this article.
Betsy Hall, followed by Randolph Parker. We're debating Article 16C.
Betsy Hall from Precinct 12. Excuse me. I recently hiked through this area, and one of the persons I was hiking with, there was 17 of us hiking 15 miles from Mile Standish State Forest to Ellisville Harbor, was a lawyer, and I brought up this High Hope Hill property. And she said that the heirs, the executive of the property, do not have a choice. They have to go back for a reappraisal because that's state law. So some people have said to me, town meeting members, you know, the, the heirs should have honored the original appraisal, but actually, there's a law that says that, that that's not allowed, that they have to go back and get a new appraisal, and that has to be honored to protect the heirs of that property. So it's not like, you know, some kind of a double cross or something. It's actually a legitimate legal need. Secondly, when I visited this property, I was privileged to stand with a number of other Plymouth residents that I hike with, and we could see the white caps out on, on Plymouth Bay. We could look out almost to Provincetown. It was just a really beautiful view that we can either acquire or not acquire. And if we acquire it, this is some, this is, to me, like a gift to future generations that, that they will have. Another thing I want to mention is that, I've been thinking a lot about this, you've heard of Quabin Reservoir. You've heard of Quabin Reservoir, for example. Or New Bedford has the Assawamset Lakes, and different cities have these giant reservoirs. We do not have a giant reservoir we can see, but we have a giant reservoir that we live on. Now, it's easier to protect Quabin Reservoir. They could say no boating, no this, no that, but we can't really do that with our reservoir. It's, we're standing on it as we, you know, as I speak right here, I'm standing on our reservoir. How are we protecting our reservoir is a question we have to ask ourselves year in and year out. How are we taking care of the lake, if you want to call it that, that's in our soil, that's underneath this, this building? And I was reading about that, and I read in this pamphlet called Greening Your Community. It says that over the last 20 years, the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority spent $130 million to acquire 22,000 acres of watershed lands to protect that Quabin reservoir area. They've spent $130 million to make sure that the water flowing into the reservoir is clean. We will need to spend more and more money to make sure that the water flowing into our reservoir, which we're standing on, is kept clean. I think this is a very good way for us to spend money that was already designated for open space, and we know that anytime we protect open space, we're helping to protect our reservoir. A little bit of research shows that if one single mature tree in this property, I walked, you know, the property has many, many thousands of mature trees, but one mature tree can intercept 2,000 gallons of water per year. And this is hundreds and hundreds of trees, that's 2,000 gallons, that we can capture. A road, if you take a road that flows near the ocean, that road will have a runoff right into the ocean, and none of that water is captured. Anywhere there's an impervious surface, all our roofs, the roofs of this building, is not capturing any water unless it has plants on it. So capturing water is really, really important. Another statistic here, vegetated buffers remove an average of 74% of the nitrogen that goes into that reservoir. So if you are looking at runoff water, if you're looking at water off roofs and so forth that runs then off into the ocean, we're not able to capture that nitrogen. And that's one of the issues that we have, is that oftentimes towns and cities are polluting the ocean. And finally, ecotourism. I have hiked with people from Hanover, Hingham. My last big hike, I hiked with somebody from South Borough. People are coming from all over because they recognize that we have a treasure. I think in the future, as more and more towns around us get developed, these systems will be more and more important. And I would like to ask, if possible, if either JB or Mr. Tierney would speak to the necessity of protecting land so that we can protect our reservoir. So maybe they would speak something about the wells and why protecting forest is so important.
30 seconds. Anyone here to respond to Betsy Hall? Anyone here to respond to Betsy Hall's question?
Procedural motion, Mr. Moderator.
When we finish with the speaker, I'll take a procedural motion. Anyone here to respond? Jonathan Beeter is the Director of Department Public Works, responding to a question from Betsy Hall. We are debating Article 16C.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon, Town Meeting. I think anything that this legislative body can do to protect our Zone 2s for our public water supplies is a benefit to the town in terms of providing safe and clean drinking water. Thank you.
Richard Caproni, your procedural motion.
Move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Motion to close debate. We have asked that anyone who wishes to still be heard to stand, to be recognized. Thank you. This time, we'll take a voice vote on whether to close debate. It's a two-thirds quantum of vote. I will now call for a voice vote on closing debate under Article 16C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries by two-thirds. We will now move forward on the main motion under Article 16C. It is a majority vote. It is a roll call if it is not unanimous. We will now call for the vote. It will first be a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries. I will now ask for those who voted in opposition to please stand, to be recognized. And we see the following people. John Sullivan, Belinda Brewster, Everett Malaguti, Richard Caproni, and Gideon Stryer. Gideon Stryer, voting in opposition. Thank you. And we now continue our Town Meeting with Article 16D. Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to appropriate the following from the fiscal year 2019 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, and you have in your motion the detail. It's a majority in a roll call. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 9-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 16D. Town Meeting approval of this article will allow the community, allow the Community Preservation Committee to set aside for later spending 10%, which is $283,982, of the estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for each of the following: open space, historic resources, and community housing. Also, 4%, $113,593, of the estimated annual revenues of the CP, Community Preservation Fund, will be set aside for the purpose of funding administrative and operational expenses in $94,276 for the interest expense on debt. The balance of the annual CPA revenue will be held as a reserve balance, which can be used for any CPA purpose at future Town Meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno.
Procedural motion, Mr. Moderator.
Proceed.
I move, we move the question, please.
Motion to close debate. I'd now ask anyone who wishes to be heard to rise. Thank you. We will now vote as to whether to close debate. It requires a two-thirds vote, a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. We will now vote on Article 16D, and it is the main motion that you have before you. We will now call first for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries, and I ask those in opposition, please rise. Richard Neely votes in opposition to 16D. Thank you. Article 17 is withdrawn. Article 18 is withdrawn. Article 19, Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 83, Section 16A through 16F. Sewer liens and charges. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 9-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 19. Approval of this article will accept provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 83, Section 16A through F, allowing the town to place liens on real estate tax bills when there is an outstanding sewer bill. This is a housekeeping article because the town has already been placing these liens. However, the record of the prior acceptance of the statute could not be located.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Article 20, Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to accept and allow the following streets, courts, circles, lanes, roads, ways, as public ways.
In a unanimous vote, in a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 20. Town Meeting approval of this article will accept the 10 roads listed on page 193 of your book as public ways. Adding to the town's number of miles of accepted public ways increases Chapter 90 funds as the state pays the town's approximately $5,000 to $8,000 per mile.
Majority vote, discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 21, Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to accept and allow Billington C. Road as a public way. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 21. Town Meeting approval of this article will accept Billington C. Road as a public way. The residents have petitioned the town for roadway improvements. The proposed roadwork will require residents to donate deed at easements to the town over the proposed roadway right-of-way. There will be a written layout clearly defining the extent of the roadway corridor. Of the 35 properties, all but two or three of the owners had signed the petition agreeing to donate the easements, and it is hoped that these two or three will sign soon.
Further discussion? Winn Gerhard, Town Meeting Member.
Winn Gerhard from Precinct 13. Just have a couple of questions. What happens if the town does not get the other two or three easements?
Anyone here to respond to the Jonathan Beeter, Director of Department Public Works, responding to a question. Article 21, Town Meeting Member Winn Gerhard. This is the annual Town Meeting coming to you live on April 7th. Jonathan Beeter, welcome.
Yeah, if we were to receive any, you know, questions in terms of not being able to move forward with any properties that may disagree with the, with the easements, we'd have to work with them and council in terms of kind of doing what we refer to as a friendly taking to acquire that property, which we've been doing in past Town Meetings. That's how we would acquire that, those lands.
And the further question is that the town's already spent some money on design and other preliminaries.
We haven't spent any money. All that design has been done in-house.
Okay. And if it gets accepted, is it subject to Chapter 90?
That's correct.
Okay.
We will receive Chapter 90 funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carries by more than two-thirds unanimously. Article 22, Mr. Salerno moves Town Vote to authorize Board of Selectmen to accept perpetual easements for public way purposes over property located on Long Pond Road. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 22. Town Meeting approval of this article will approve alteration of the road layout and authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement for highway purposes. The developer of the corner lot on Long Pond Road and County Drive will grant the town a permanent easement, and the town intends to widen the road at that intersection and include the easement in this layout. The developer will fund the construction as part of its mitigation.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 23, Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept perpetual easements for public way purposes over property located on Court Street. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 23. Town Meeting approval of this article will approve alteration of the road layout and authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement for highway purposes. The developer of the CVS store at the corner lot on Court Street and Cherry Street will grant the town a permanent easement, and the town intends to include the easement in the road layout for future changes.
Discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. Michael Bobini. Discussion under Article 23, the annual Town Meeting, coming to you live on Saturday, April 7th, Plymouth North High School. Mr. Bobini?
Thank you, Ms. Murray. On the previous vote, the developer paid for the road improvements to be done in the easement, which they granted. Can you tell, is CVS paying for any of these road improvements as part of their mitigation?
Anyone here to respond to Michael Bobini? Jonathan Beeter, Director of Department Public Works, responding to Michael Bobini's question regarding CVS paying for some of the roadwork on this particular article for Court Street property. Jonathan Beeter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, as part of the offset mitigation for the CVS project, we received some funding to go towards design, but in addition to that, we're receiving the easement so we could have a future right-turn lane onto Cherry Street. So that was the mitigation for this project.
Speak in the microphone, please.
So they have some, submitted some dollars for the...
That's, that's correct, and we use that towards the design, conceptual design of the intersection.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 24, Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept perpetual easements for public way purposes over property located on Carver Road. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 24. Town Meeting approval of this article will approve alteration of the road layout and authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept an easement for highway purposes. The property owner of the Stonegate subdivision at the corner of Carver Road and Montgomery Drive will grant the town a permanent easement, and the town intends to include the easement in the road layout for future changes.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 25, Mr. Salerno moves Town Vote to authorize Board of Selectmen to accept perpetual easements for public way purposes over property located on Bourne Road. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 25. Town Meeting approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept easements from the property owner of Deer Pond Village subdivision on Bourne Road near Amanda Avenue. The owner of the property is willing to grant the town easement for highway purposes for whatever portion of Bourne Road he owns.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 26, Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to amend the general bylaws by striking Section 6 of Chapter 43, Council on Aging, Appointment of Staff in Its Entirety as on file with the Town Clerk. It's a majority in a roll call. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 11-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 26. Town Meeting approval of this article will amend the general bylaws by deleting Section 6 of Chapter 43 regarding the Council on Aging Appointments of Staff. The bylaw conflicts with the Charter, which grants the Town Manager authority to appoint all staff. Deletion of this section ensures that appointment of COA staff appointments are made in compliance with the Charter.
Discussion? Yes, Randolph Parker, Precinct 7. We're deliberating on Article 26 of the annual Town Meeting warrant. This is Saturday, April 7th, coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. Randolph Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Trifletti. Is there anybody here from the Council of Aging to speak to this change? How do they feel about not making appointments themselves to their staff, of their staff?
Jennifer Young, Council on Aging, welcome to Plymouth Town Meeting.
Hi, thank you. The reason for the change is that it's out of compliance with the Massachusetts General Law and the Town Charter. I was never able to make appointments, and neither was my Board of Directors. So this is just handing that appointment authority back to Melissa Origi.
Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Peter Neville on Article 26. Do you have a question or a comment?
Having served on, Peter Neville, Precinct 10, I served on the Council on Aging Board for several years, and I would wonder and hope that the Director of the Council on Aging would have input to any hiring decisions. I don't know if that's part of the, the deal in terms of how management works, but they should certainly have a voice in who gets hired for that staff. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 27, Mr. Salerno moves the Town Vote to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 81, Harbor, as found in the warrant language on pages 241 to 243 of the annual Town Meeting Report and Recommendation of the Advisory and Finance Committee. It's a majority vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Salerno?
In a unanimous vote of 9-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 27. Town Meeting approval of this article will amend Chapter 81, Harbor, Chapter 81, Harbor of the general bylaws. The changes provide better definition, enhanced public safety, and better management practice, and are consistent with federal, state, and waterways regulations.
Further discussion? Randolph Parker, Precinct 7. We're debating Article 27, annual Town Meeting. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, page 242, owners with defective moorings shall be allowed seven days after receiving notice from the harbor master to correct defective conditions. If the defect is not corrected after this time, so once seven days goes by, my reading of this means I don't have to do anything because after that seven days, I cannot fix my mooring. Do you mean during that time to the author of this revision?
Chad Hunter is the harbor master, responding to a question from Randolph Parker.
So we got seven days. It says after that time, we can correct the defect. Do you mean during that time, Chad?
Mr. Hunter?
So that language already currently exists in the bylaw. It was just being reallocated to a different position. It's, as it stands right now, it's 81-11D9, which is the section, and that is the, the exact... wording. We just reassigned it to 81-11B.
Any further questions, Mr. Parker?
After receiving notice from the harbor master, I think, Mr. Trifletti, I move to change the word "after" under Section B to "during" this time. So people have seven days to fix their mooring once the harbor master gives them notice.
So it's a motion to amend by striking "after"
And inserting "during."
And substituting "during." Normally, Mr. Parker, we will not accept changes to drafting bylaws and town meeting floor. However, given that this is one word, and that it is understood that it does not conflict with any other section of the bylaw, I will accept the motion for purposes of debate. Do you get to be heard on your motion to amend?
Hoop-de-doo, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion? We're now on the motion to amend from Mr. Parker, in which he wishes to strike the word "after" and substitute the word "during." And again, Mr. Parker, just to be clear, where in the text do you wish to make that change? Could you come to the microphone? You could sit closer to it.
He wouldn't move. All right. Let's see. Thank you. In between the words "corrected" and "this," delete "after"
Mr. Parker.
And insert "during."
I've just consulted with town councils. The reason why we don't want to do this in town meeting floor, not going to accept your motion. It creates a problem with the bylaw, and we'd be happy to discuss that with you after town meeting.
Oh, fine, I'm just voting no, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on this article? Richard Barberi.
Yes, Richard Barberi, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I read this, and it said that the areas that are strike are going to be deleted. Is that the way that I understand this? So we're deleting all the size of the blocks, the length of the boats?
Chad Hunter, harbor master, responding to Richard Barberi's question. Mr. Hunter.
So there is a lot of mooring specifications that are being taken out of the bylaw, but they will exist in waterway regulations. And what that does, it allows us the flexibility moving forward to update them. So there's technology such as mooring roads, elastic roads, conservation moorings that are not in our current bylaw. So we're going to put them into waterway regulations and do an update as well.
So that would include the new, that thing they call the helical screw?
Correct.
Okay. Because I was reading this, and I'm saying, they can't be doing away with all this.
It'll live in the waterway regulations.
Just get into a different category?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? And again, for any other town meeting members that like further explanation on my refusal for the motion to amend, one word in a bylaw can make all the difference in the meaning, and in this case, it does present a problem as we've had further time to review and reflect upon the proposed change. So we're going with the motion as printed in the book. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
The motion carries. Would you please stand if you're voting in opposition? Randolph Parker, Precinct 7. Anyone else? Thank you. Article 28, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to amend the general bylaws by striking Section 4 of Chapter 134, Ponds, Airplanes in Its Entirety. Mr. Salerno.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 28. Town meeting approval of this article will amend Chapter 134, Ponds, of the general bylaws by deleting Section 134-4, Airplanes in Its Entirety. There was a legal case where a ticket had been issued for landing an aircraft on one of the ponds. However, the court ruled the bylaw to be unenforceable and invalid as it conflicted with state laws. It would eliminate confusion if this unenforceable section was removed from the bylaw.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 29, we have multiple motions. The first motion, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to transfer the care cussing control of the following parcels from the town treasurer for the purpose of tax title to the Conservation Commission for the purpose of conservation of open space. And you'll see, one is off of Lakeview Avenue, and the other is off of Savory Pond. Mr. Salerno.
First, some general comments. Since the effect of this article is to place property now in tax title, that is now in tax title's foreclosed status into permanent conservation status, the committee felt the need to break out and deliberate on each individual property. Thus, the committee divided the article into the following separate components, now broken out into those recommending approval and those not recommending approval. The first motion is for those, those the committee is recommending for approval. Should I continue on on the first motion?
On motion number one.
In a vote of, I'm talking, referring to 29-2, in vote of 8-2-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 29-2, Lakeview Ave. The property is 0.09 acres of vegetated land along the shore of Island Pond. It protects Class A water, is identified as a wildlife and plant corridor, provides cooling properties, carbon sink protection, and is 80% or greater native vegetation. The second property is 29-4. In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 29-4, off Savory Pond. The committee felt that a 23.44 acre lot of forested land near Savory Pond and the Savory Wellhead was property worth preserving. The parcel is contiguous to existing protected open space and is identified as a corridor between natural landscapes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Betsy Hall is the chair of the Open Space Committee, and she'll be addressing us on Article 29. Again, we have two motions. Currently, we have motion one before us. Betsy Hall, welcome.
Thank you, Betsy Hall, Chair of the Open Space Committee. I've not used this before, or at least I don't remember, so if I make a mistake, just yell at me and I'll correct it. But I'm going to do a little bit of an introduction and then go on to... Does that come up? Does this, do you know if this comes out?
Is your microphone working?
I just wondered if it comes out of there, but I guess it doesn't. I'm going to turn this way, oh, that's better.
Thank you.
So one of the questions, we need to back this slide up. Here we go. So one of the actions of town meeting in 1999 was to establish an open space committee. And the purpose of this was, as you can see, to protect the aquifer and surface waters. That's a major goal of the Open Space Committee, is at any time that we can, to help protect our aquifer. Secondly, to protect our wildlife corridors. This is very important, because this is an area of tremendous biodiversity. There are many endangered species or rare species in Plymouth. And as an open space committee, we want to help the town meeting to protect those areas. We also want to control sprawl and traffic congestion. I moved into South Plymouth 40 years ago, and I can assure you the amount of traffic between when I moved into that area and what we're seeing now has increased tremendously. And so anyways, the Open Space Committee can help to control sprawl and traffic congestion we want to do. We also want to safeguard our natural character and scenic views. Some things we really can't put a price on. When you walk that beach on the ocean, when you are beside a pond in Plymouth, that kind of a experience does not have a dollar sign, but for our residents as well as our visitors, it's a very important experience. We want to increase public access to recreation and continue to expand our trail system. One of the questions that came up from Advisory and Finance, it was a very good question, was what is one acre worth? Like, why would the Open Space Committee want to just preserve just one acre? And so I did some research on that. What is one acre of forest worth? It protects the trees, the shrubs, and the herbaceous plants, as well as any fungi, insects, mammals, et cetera, that live in that area. Secondly... It pro, whoops, let's see. It absorbs six tons of carbon dioxide and puts out four tons of oxygen each year. So most of us want to continue breathing and would like to have fresh air, and that's an eno, just one acre, just one acre of forest is capable of producing that level of oxygen and also to absorb that much, that amount of carbon dioxide. And then amazingly, just one acre of forest is capable of capturing 27,000 gallons of water during a one-inch rainstorm. This comes from a university study. And much of this water, of course, is then stored in that reservoir beneath our town. So for every acre of property that we can, forest that we can preserve, we're preserving 27,000, or the opportunity to capture up to 27,000 gallons. As I said earlier, when we have an impervious service, that water can just run off. But when we have stored water, that's the water we're going to use when we go to our wells, whether it's a private well or a public well. In addition, one acre of forest protects our biodiversity, provides opportunity for outdoor recreation, and creates essential wildlife corridors. So preserving just that one, when we bring you one acre, we are not being frivolous. We feel that every acre of forest that we have in Plymouth is very, very important. One of the properties that we brought to Advisory and Finance was Province Town View, and you see that crossed, well, you see that crossed out in your book. That's because Advisory and Finance asked us to take a second look at that. They felt that we needed to do more due diligence on that property, so we removed it from consideration for this town meeting. And we always appreciate all of the feedback that we get from Advisory and Finance, and we take the feedback from Advisory and Finance very seriously. So just for your increased knowledge about what is groundwater, it's the net rainfall that enters the soil. Now, a certain amount of that will be evaporated back out, but much of it is captured, and it's captured in layers. So there's deeper and deeper layers that go into the water. There is 600 gallons, I'm sorry, for recharge, it's 600,000 gallons per year for a whole acre. And I think that, so 90 gallons per day, per person is what we use. So each one of us is using, according to studies, approximately 90 gallons of water, which is 132,000ths of gallons of water for a family of four. As we increase our population, we heard from our planning department, our planning board, that we have had a number of new houses added to Plymouth recently. Each one of those houses, each person is going to be using a tremendous, you know, thousands and thousands of gallons per year. And we're also adding businesses. Businesses also use a huge amount of water. In addition, we have golf courses, lawns, lots of different ways that water are being used in Plymouth. This is just a quick little bit of review of science from eighth grade. You know, this is just, you could see quickly that when water falls into a river or a lake, it evaporates very quickly. The water that's stored in the ground, it doesn't have that opportunity to evaporate, so it's a much better capturing system, it's a much better reservoir than a lake would be, which evaporates very quickly when the sun hits it in particular. So I put up some slides, just so that we will take our water maybe even more seriously than we have. First of all, is conservation. We all should be conserving, using as little water as we can, in many, many ways that we can, we can preserve water. And two years ago, the state of Massachusetts was in a severe drought area. And one of the things that that caused to happen is for Brockton to look at how they're getting their water. Silver Lake got so low, which is one of their main ways they get water, that you could ride ATVs, I read in this article, around the inside of the lake. And the water that goes into Silver Lake is quite vulnerable, because a number of towns use it. So if we should go into another serious drought condition, there's going to be some serious issues for Brockton. Cape Cod, big drinking water problems on Cape Cod, there's a tremendous amount of pollution. One of the things that one acre of forest can do, and that is it can filter the water. So trees are actually filtering systems. Filtering, water filtering systems are very expensive. When we put up a huge water treatment plant to filter, to treat our water, we put in chlorine and different items. The trees can do, can do a lot of that filtering for us if we hang on to our forests. And anything that spilled on the ground, everything we put on the ground, whether it's lawn material, you know, lawn fertilizers, whatever we put on the ground, anything that gets spilled, it's going into our underwater lake, that reservoir that is under our town. So we also need to be extremely cautious about not only what we cut down in terms of forest and develop in terms of forest, but what we as homeowners are doing on a daily basis. Massachusetts, 92% of the state, two years ago, was in a severe or almost severe drought conditions. This can happen again. If it happens in Plymouth, we can have all the water that we need if we conserve it and if we protect it. And finally, what does water do, a water crisis do to tourism? Tourism is one of our number ways we have revenue. If we had a severe drought and we didn't have water, we would not have tourists. And this is something that Cape Town and Africa right now is, is dealing with today. So one of the things that has happened around the world is that whole countries have cut down too much water, too many trees, and they're now reforesting. I just put reforest into Google. Hawaii's reforesting, Brazil is reforesting, India's reforesting, Indonesia's reforesting. China has diverted 66,000 of their military to plant trees. That's what trees are worth, to divert all of these resources and buy all of these trees and plant all of these trees. And the reason for that is because the other thing that trees do is they filter the air.
Betsy, with all due respect, you're about to talk me out of voting for this.
All right. So we can go to, thank you. So I do...
Mr. Collins, I assume that was a point of order, but it really is out of, out of order.
So let me just say one more thing. I'm about to go, this is my last slide. England is about to spend $50 million to replant trees. They're going to, they're going to replant trees the entire width of the country of Britain. We don't need to do that in Plymouth. We do not need now to go back and plant trees. We can just avoid cutting them down. Okay, so we're next going to go to Lakeview Avenue? Scary? I'm sorry, Lakeview Avenue is what we're going to vote on next? Is that correct, Mr. Salerno? We're going to vote on Lakeview Avenue. Is that right?
Betsy, you are recognized. I do have some procedural motions waiting. Do you want to finish your presentation? Or are you ready, are you willing to defer to the procedural motion? She agrees. Who's, I heard voices of moving wrestling brewster? Motion to close debate. Would anyone rise who still wishes to be heard? Thank you. Okay, we're now going to vote on whether to close debate on motion number one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. We now have motion number two, and Mr. Tavares moves the town vote to transfer care cussing control of the fall. Yes, we'll first vote on that motion under number one. And it is the motion from Mr. Salerno for the two parcels, Lakeview Ave and Savory Pond, requires a two-thirds vote. We'll now take a vote on the main motion under number one, and it's going to be a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The motion carries, and it does not require a roll call, and it carries by more than two-thirds. We will now move to motion two. Mr. Tavares moves the town vote to transfer the care cussing control of the following parcels from the town treasurer for the purpose of tax title to the Conservation Commission for the purpose of conservation and ocean space. I would like to draw to your attention that although your motion book shows off of Savory Pond, we have already voted that. So we're talking about 195 Mountain Hill Road and off Manomet Street. Mr. Salerno.
In a vote of 4-6-0, the Advisory and Fin, speaking on item 29-3, which is Mountain Hill Road, in a vote of 4-6-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting not approve Article 29-3, 195 Mountain Hill Road. The majority of the committee did not feel that a compelling case was made to take the property out of tax title and put it into permanent conservation. On item 29-5, in a vote of 2-8-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting not approve Article 29-5, Manomet Street and Harvard Ave, Harvard Street. The majority of the committee did not feel that a compelling case was made to take these properties out of tax title and put it into permanent properties out of tax title and put it into permanent conservation. These parcels are small components of a larger piece of property. It appeared short-sighted to the majority of the committee to place these in conservation without a plan being placed before this body for the entire parcel. They are already owned by the town. There seemed to be no rush to put them into permanent conservation until such a plan is developed.
Voter Selectman care to be heard on the motion from Mr. Tavares. Melissa Arigie is town manager.
Thank you very much. The board felt strongly when they debated this and they watched the presentation that all the parcels that were being recommended by this committee were worthy of saving and putting into permanent conservation.
Mr. Brewster, do you have a motion that you wish to make? Motion to close debate. It is not debatable. Anyone care to rise to be heard? Thank you. We'll now—
What are we voting on?
We are voting on whether to close debate on motion number two.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? No, there's no discussion on closing debate. Sorry. We'll now take a vote on whether to close debate on motion two. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. We have closed debate on motion two under Article 29, and we will now vote on motion two. It is a two-thirds vote, and it'll now take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Excuse—
Opposed say no. The chair is in doubt. We will vote by electronic—
Excuse me. There are four parcels that are being offered by the Open Space Committee. Have we already voted on the first two that were—
We have voted on the first two.
Okay.
We have just voted on the second two. I am in doubt. We are going to now take a vote by electronic voting for motion number two and Article 29. A yes vote would be to vote in favor of Mr. Tavares's motion under motion two of Article 29 for 195 Mountain Hill Road and off Manomet Street and off of Harvard Street. And a no vote would be in opposition to that. Any questions before we take the vote? If not, we're going to be voting electronically when the light goes on. Thank you. You now can vote. You have 20 seconds in which to cast your vote. It is a two-thirds vote. Town meeting members are voting electronically on Article 29. It is a two-thirds vote. When the voting is completed, we will know whether or not they have voted two-thirds to support the motion. The town meeting record of votes will show on the screen, three precincts at a time. We've completed the vote, and it failed. Fifty-four having voted in favor, 64 in opposition, and zero abstentions. We now move to Article 30, which is withdrawn, Article 31. Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to amend its zoning bylaw as set forth in the document on file with the town clerk entitled "Town of Plymouth, Massachusetts Zoning Bylaw," dated December 2017, and to amend the official zoning map of the town of Plymouth as on file with the town clerk. It's a two-thirds vote, and a roll call if it is not unanimous. Mr. Salerno.
In a unanimous vote of 10-0-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 31. Town meeting approval of this article will amend the zoning bylaw and official zoning map of the town. The bylaw has been rewritten by legal counsel and staff with input from interested parties. The current bylaw is 45 years old, outdated, has received hundreds of amendments over the years, and is not consistent with legal decisions. This reworking will not change the way the town does business. It is just more readable and more defendable. There were some sections that were not touched because they would require a far more complicated process. The untouched sections include signed bylaw, inclusionary zoning, open space, mixed-use development, prevention of light pollution, Cordage Park, Aubrey Street overlay, traditional village density development, and wind energy facilities. The full document has been available in the Planning Department, town clerk's office at the libraries, and online on the zoning bylaw update page, and is in your town meeting handbook at page 279. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I take— Mr. Conroy. Mr. Brewster, do you have a procedural motion?
Yes, I do. Mr. Moderator, looking at the time, I would like to move that we extend the time up to 5:00 if we need it.
It is a motion to extend the time. If the motion were to pass, it would only be for two hours—
Okay.
—because that's what's required, and if it passes, we would take a one-minute recess. So, currently, we're scheduled to recess at 3:01. Any discussion on Mr. Brewster's motion to extend? If not, yes, Kevin Joyce, please come forward. I would also note that I could hold off on any action, and you could decide whether to vote to adjourn. Otherwise, I'll be taking a recess for one minute.
I would amend that to 4:00 if we need it.
Okay. I'm going to hold off, and we'll take a recess following this, and we'll continue, because I don't have a motion to adjourn from anyone at this time. Mr. Conroy.
In relation to the bylaw, I'm a member of Precinct 5. Also, I'm on the Zoning Board of Appeals. One item that this bylaw does not address is currently the damage caused to roads by sand and gravel operations are being paid by a portion by the taxpayers. By example, the zoning board heard a petition where 870,000 cubic yards were being removed off—a property off of Bourne Road. The owner offered to pay $87,000 to mitigate the damage to the roads. The DPW wrote a letter stating that the damage caused to these roads were greatly in excess of that $87,000. So, the zoning board asked this, "Gentlemen, will you pay the actual amount of the damage that you're causing?" He stated that he's not going to pay the damage because it's not in the bylaw. He doesn't have to, and he was right. So, how do we solve this problem? It's the use of a mitigation fee. This mitigation fee will cause the developer to pay the actual cost of the damage that he causes. A mitigation fee is allowed in Massachusetts. It's—the case is the Emerson College case and the Franklin case. I spoke to town council about this. This is allowed. So, for today, I'm in support of this bylaw, but I've asked Lee Hartman, come February, or come fall, can we address this issue? Can we cause the taxpayers to stop footing the bill for these developers that are making millions of dollars when we get stuck paying their damage? And that's what's happening. So, I'm in support of this bylaw, but I want the town to know what's going on with these sand and gravel operations, and we have the ability to fix this. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article 31? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 32, Mr. Salerno moves the town vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 for the purposes of conducting title research specifically related to the so-called 1,000 acres and any related costs and expenses as recommended by the town manager. It's a majority vote and a roll call if it is not unanimous. Mr. Salerno.
In a vote of 9-2-0, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 32. Town meeting approval of this article will appropriate $100,000 for title research on the so-called 1,000-acre property. Many agree that the town should pursue clearing titles to this land and developing access to Route 25. The best method to provide tax relief to the homeowners in Plymouth is commercial development. 1,000 acres offers the potential for such development in South Plymouth. The town already owns 35.8% of the lots. The intent is for the $100,000 to be used to begin the process of clearing titles, starting with suspect titles of the highest prioritized parcels. If successful, future town meetings could appropriate additional funds to continue the process. While the substance of the article was not terribly controversial, those opposed did not feel this was the right time to do it. The majority felt it was a good investment for the future of the town.
We are required to take a recess once every two hours. It being 3:00 PM, we will take a one-minute recess. 32 at this time. The petitioner, Michael Hanlon, will make his petition of presentation. Mr. Hanlon, welcome. Article 32. It's a majority vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous.
Do we need a motion to continue?
No, we do not. We have not adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hope I don't break it. As you all know, I'm the proponent for this article. I've been to the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and they have all supported this article. I've also been to almost every precinct caucus, except for the two that came on the same night as my precinct caucus. I wanted to thank everybody for their hospitality at those caucuses. We had a good discussion. There were lots of good questions. I tried to answer all the questions that I could and not make up any answers. I think there's—as I can see from the line here, there's still a couple of remaining questions, so we can try to answer those. As you all know, this—I'm not going to do my PowerPoint presentation all over again. I'm not even going to refer to it. This property is zoned residential, and that's exactly what we're going to get if we don't do something different. In order to do something different, we need to have a broad-based community discussion about what it is we want to do with this 1,000 acres. I have suggested one idea that includes commercial development and preserving significant open space, but I don't get to decide. Ultimately, you get to decide. But we need to have that discussion community-wide. What do we want this property to be? We just spent $1 million preserving 88 acres. So, I would ask you, do the math, what is 852 acres worth? If it's worth 10 times 88 acres, it's worth $10 million. We have made significant investments in preserving open space in this community, and I don't think that's going to change. We also need to balance that with some significant economic development that generates significant non-residential tax dollars for this community. I believe that, and that's part of why I'm pursuing this. I hope that you will agree that we need to do something to clear the titles on the 1,000 acres so that we can create a win-win situation with appropriate economic development and preservation of open space. This article will have long-term benefits for the community, and you should look at it as a long-term investment in the future of our community. Thank you. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them if I can.
Further discussion on Article 32? Cheryl King Fisher, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members. I'm Cheryl King Fisher. I represent Precinct 6. I do agree that we do need to have a broad-based community conversation about the 1,000 acres and about where in our community future industrial, commercial, office-based development needs to go. I fail to understand—and I will be voting no on this article. I fail to understand how spending $100,000 on some X number of these parcels with what I think has been the goal of this article, to find a location for an industrial, commercial, office space location. And so, I've listened to the presentation about four times now, Mike, and I have—I went and took the opportunity to go back and see if I could find some information to guide me in making my own decision, and I went back to the study that was quoted in the article information, and I read it very carefully. And in that study, which was called our commerc— sorry, Industrial, Commercial, and Office Space Land Study, it was—it was a great piece of work that was released to the community in 2012. We are about to receive, all of us, access to the RKG study, which essentially, as I understand it, is an update on the evaluation that was done on the need for industrial development in the community. I look forward to seeing that. For the third time today, I must say that the poor horse is behind the cart again in that in the 2012 study, it identified about eight criteria that are critical to the success of an industrial park or whatever. Access and clear title are two of them. We don't have to spend anything at this point to find out what it would take to gain an interchange on Route 25. And we also know that that's going to take a long period of time. So, I would think that the town might want to do that first before we start spending $100,000 this year or next year or for the next 10 years. And on top of that, this is probably one of very few money items in today's warrant that we can say no to and go back and tell those in our precincts who ask us not to spend our tax dollars unwisely, that at least we said no to this one. Thank you.
William Abbott, to be followed by Edward Russell. We are debating Article 32, contained in the warrant. This is coming before you from Plymouth's annual town meeting. Welcome, William Abbott.
Bill Abbott, Precinct 12. I just want to make three points. This article is premature, and we should be— I think we should vote no on it. And the three points are, if this piece of land is in the very southern tip of South Plymouth, to get north, the only way they can go is up Bourne Road, a very windy, twisty road to reach Halfway Pond Road, to reach Long Pond Road, to get out to Exit 3. Already, the traffic on that series of highways has reached capacity with the make-piece Redbrook Development only half-developed. Many people can't—that are here in this room, can't get out of the driveways as-is. And as I suggested, industrial park development on that 1,000 acres is absolutely ludicrous. That's point one. Point two, there is no exit. There's not going to be any exit. During the time of the movie studio, which was a big imperative, they talked to the state about an exit. There is still no exit. There wouldn't have been an exit. It's a limited-access highway. We keep hearing it. And number three, if we start spending money now on that land to clear titles, the drumbeat will start to try to develop that land as soon as there's some clear title, regardless of there being no exit. And then we've created—we've tripled the nightmare of traffic trying to get to Exit 3. So, until we know with certainty that there will be an exit, it's premature. Let it sit there as priority habitat. We're not there yet, and I think we should definitely vote no on this article.
Edward Russell.
Most of what I wanted to say has already been said, but I might add that we're going to have to spend an awful lot of money to improve the roads that Bill Abbott just talked about because they can't handle the traffic now, and I'll bet they use up one big chunk of any of the commercial or industrial development taxes that are brought in just in repairing and improving those roads.
David Peck. We're debating Article 32. Mr. Peck, you've not spoken before, and Mr. Hool has.
Thank you. David Peck, Precinct 4. When I was going through the thin book with the budget, I see we already have $50,000 in the administrative services. It's on page 19, if you want to look. We already have $50,000 byline for title research on the 1,000 acres. So, the clarification is, I think at some point, we should clear those titles regardless whether— whether it's for open space or for other things, but unless the intent of this group is 150,000, we already have 50, and this could be modified to 50 or turned down, and you've got, you already have 50 in the bank, or we need to change the town manager's budget by 50 because you've already approved that earlier today. So just requesting a clarification.
Anyone can respond to David Peck. Melissa Origi, town manager.
Having the thousand acres listed in the town manager's budget as part of that title research line item, that shouldn't be there. I thought we removed it last year. We checked again this year. That general broad 50,000 is for title research. This year, we used it for White Horse Beach when the board made that a priority to do the title research there. We have no intentions of using that for the thousand-acre site because that hasn't been a priority at the executive level.
Just going by what it says.
Yep, I understand.
Michael Landers, Article 32, Plymouth's annual town meeting. Good afternoon.
All right. I totally, I totally agree with everything that's been said. But that being said, I want to remind those of us who've been here for a long time about a promise that was made to us, and it probably was back around 2012. It was when Hollywood came to town and we were bedazzled and nearly bamboozled and all of that. But at that time, there was a lot of discussion about the thousand acres. And there was a commitment by us and many other people at that time to begin the process, baby steps, of going after a little bit per year and clearing some of these titles. Some of the title searches had been abandoned over the years, and there's possibly even some research there that could be helpful. I don't think $100,000 to begin that process is going to hurt us. If anything, it'll start the process. The other thing is that if somebody wants to come back next year to continue that process, they're still going to have to come back to us with some set figure and ask us for a little more. But we were promised years ago that this process would begin, and it did not happen. I think it's about time we started it because 30 or 40 years from now, this could become very important, and there may be some other things in that area that will cause the state to want to put some access ways into the highways down there. So I think it's about time we started it.
Christopher Hool.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Hool, Precinct 14. Although I generally support the intent of this article, I will be voting no. I think it's important that all appropriate parties have a seat at the table in developing how to prioritize spending of whatever amount of money, whether it's 100,000 or some larger future number. And I don't feel like that this article has given enough thought to the other uses of this thousand-acre parcel beyond just economic development. Thank you.
Donna Curtin. We're debating Article 32. Donna Curtin.
Donna Curtin, Precinct Three. I've been tremendously surprised by the ease which this article has gained the support of many boards and committees, including many individuals whose opinions I respect and value. But I do think there is something misleading about our process, and I also have a good regard and respect for town meeting's commitment to process, and I think we do need to take a step back here. The town clearly has an important ownership interest in this agglomeration of parcels, and maybe we should just get started on it and, if I may, follow the Pied Piper of Hanlon into the thicket of the thousand-acre woods. But I do think we should be able to answer this basic question really before we proceed down this road. What value does this substantial investment of public dollars offer to the community of Plymouth? And in the discussion that we've been having with this town meeting, we have received only a very one-sided and limited vision. And this vision of economic potential that has been discussed and presented at our various caucuses and other public meetings, I'm astonished that people find this convincing. If you look at the details that have been presented with this article, the bulk of that economic development potential is not assigned to the thousand acres where the town has this ownership interest and where we would actually be doing the work of clearing these titles. It is attached to an entirely different assemblage of parcels of land that Mr. Hanlon, the article's sponsor, has referred to as the adjoining land. So it seems incomprehensible to me that we would think about investing $100,000 this year and maybe next year and maybe more down the line to clear title to one tract of land where we have a large interest in in order to provide for the economic development of a different parcel of land that is 90 percent privately owned. This, to me, does not add up. I would just like to also say, when we look at the tract of land in question, it seems to be 70 percent of those parcels have some sort of conservation designation attached to them. So why the heck aren't we having the discussion about the conservation value of this effort? I think even what we have heard at this town meeting today, we're going to find that water resource is going to be what we're talking about in the years coming ahead, and I don't know what the value of conserving water through conserving this potential large tract of land may be. I think we need to pose those questions. I think we need to have a very different discussion about this before we go forward. I will be voting no on this, and I hope some others here will join me.
Kenneth Howe. Let me guess, a motion to close debate.
Right on.
Thank you. It is not debatable. Those who wish to be recognized as possible speakers, please stand. At this time, we will vote on whether to close debate. It's a two-thirds vote. It's not debatable. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of closing debate on Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries by more than two-thirds. We will now have a vote on Article 32, and I think we're going to go right to the electronic voting because I believe this is a divided vote. And so get your clickers, your handsets ready, and when the light goes on, you'll be voting on Article 32, the main motion. This is coming to you live, and you're now voting. We have 20 seconds in which to vote. Town meeting members, we'll get ready to vote. Following the vote, we will be hearing from Kenneth Tavares, who is chair of the Board of Selectmen. And the vote continues. Five seconds, four, three, two, one. We've completed the vote. The vote will be shown on the board. 117 town meeting members did vote. It did fail. Yes, 48. No, 69. End zero abstentions. Kenneth Tavares, Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Town meeting members, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, we appreciate your time today and what you've done. And see, it wasn't really all that hard. We had good debate. I think there was some good humor in here today, and you discharge your duties well. Thank you. Also, at this time, I'd like to introduce two new employees that are very important to the work that we do in the town. Wayne Wachtin. Wayne, if you would stand up, please, is our new facilities manager. Wayne was greeted with a couple of storms and has been doing quite a bit of work around our new buildings and old buildings. The next person is Sylvia Genoah. And if you want to really feel good about yourself, they get younger and younger as we get older walking out of here. Also, I don't want to steal any thunder, but I'm going to take a little bit of it. And a year ago when we were here, we recognized three members of this body that had great service of over 40 years to the town. I didn't realize at that time that this year, we'd be saying goodbye to someone. Charlie Vandini. This is his last meeting, and I think it should be publicly said that Charlie is a very, very unique individual. He's a man of great principle. You never guess where Charlie's coming from. He makes it known. In his life, he's had some wonderful ups and downs, and he manages to set an example by putting one foot in front of the other and continues. We're going to miss you, Charlie. Thank you.
Charlie, would you like to come forward to say a few words? This is Charles Vandini, Precinct One, long-serving member of Plymouth Town Meeting, coming to the podium to address Plymouth Town Meeting before we close this session. Welcome, Charles Vandini.
Thank you. Well, my name is Charlie Vandini. I come to you tonight to say this is my last town meeting, and I shall not be running for my seat in Precinct One, North Plymouth. And in Italian, North Plymouth. They say, "Ez vidi vatch." And with that, I turn the voting over to the younger than me and the really younger than me. And I want to give them, and I want to give them some advice. If they vote, vote with, vote common sense. Vote common sense. And if they don't want to vote common sense, then vote no. And if they want a little more advice, they come to North Plymouth. I'll be sitting on the bench in front of the hardware store from seven to five. And if they want to come down, we're invited to sit down, and we'll discuss the situation. And I won't really make a good decision. At this time, me and I met an awful lot of good friends. And to them, I say, "Thank you, and God bless you." Now, I'll be watching you, I'll be watching youse guys on television. Now, you better be careful because I could come back. And with that, I say, "God bless this town meeting, and God bless Plymouth Town Meeting." And to the moderator, Steve, I say, "I move the question."
Charlie, if you could just stay there for a second. Just stay at the podium. We're first going to have closing remarks from Harry Salerno. Harry?
I want to thank you all for your attention and your respect for the Advisory and Finance Committee's work. I hope it was helpful in your deliberations. What you see here today is merely the tip of the deliberating iceberg that goes into the recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. You are all always welcome and needed to observe and comment at our meeting. I want to thank the committee for all their efforts, and of course, Carrie Gillette for making our task even possible. I look forward to seeing you all at the next town meeting, presumably in the fall.
And thank you to Nicole, Larry, Carrie, Harry, and the Finance Committee. And I want to just again mention, thank you to all of the boards that helped make this a good process. The school committee, the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee. In order to have a good town meeting, we have a process before town meeting, and I encourage you all to participate prior to town meeting as we start to plan for the next one. Article Three, we have no motion, no action. And now, Charlie Vandini, do you have a motion?
I move that we dissolve this town meeting.
All right. Motion to dissolve any discussion. If not, we will vote on Charlie Vandini's last motion at town meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are now dissolved at 3:25 p.m.